We'll begin the Planning and Zoning Commission for tonight with a pledge of allegiance. You all, we've all seen this, but I'd like to thank Bob and Stan for a nice mobile mining tour to start us off down the path toward workshops and solving all of the issues that may be surrounding sand mines today. Thank you all for a very nice tour. We had, almost all of us were there and it was a beautiful day, so, thank you. Any change to the minutes, or can I have a motion to approve?
Move to adopt as presented.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Wonderful. We've got two items on consent, but anybody care to pull either T-Mobile or the State Road 60 Industrial Park? Need a motion to approve as presented then?
Second.
Third?
We've got a unanimous second, so, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Quickly, item A is the T-Mobile Vero Beach Moose Lodge request for administrative permit use approval to construct a stealth eighty-foot flagpole wireless communications tower at the Vero Beach Moose Lodge number eighteen twenty-two. Item B is State Road 60 Industrial Park request to modify preliminary plat condition of approval for Moto Inc., subdivision now known as State Road 60 Industrial Park. Those two items have been approved. Item four is a public hearing. It's the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints request for special exception use approval to expand the existing church. Stan, who's going to do this? Brian?
Mr. Chairman, this is a quasi judicial matter. Would you...
Oh, I'm sorry. Sure. Anyone who cares to speak in the public, this is quasi judicial, needs to be sworn in. Please.
Raise your white hand, please. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Thank you. Okay, Brian?
Thank you, Chairman Hamner. My name is Brian Freeman, Indian River County Senior Planner, and this is a request for special exception use approval. And special exception uses are special uses that have to meet specific land development regulation criteria, and these criteria are in Chapter nine seventy-one, and these are criteria for places of worship. In addition, the proposed use is looked at for appropriateness and compatibility with the surrounding area, and also, there are two public hearings as part of the special exception process. At this public hearing, the Planning and Zoning Commission is to make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, and the Board of County Commissioners will conduct the second public hearing, and the recommendation may be either to approve the request, approve it with conditions, or to deny the request. And what's shown on the map is a zoning map of the area, and as you can see, both the site and the surrounding area are all zoned RS six, single-family residential. And I'll just point out that the site is located on the north side of 12th Street, and it is east of Forty-third Avenue. This is an aerial view of the site and the surrounding area, and as you can see, the predominant land use in this area is single-family residences, although there is also another church just to the southwest of the site, and that's kind of the bottom corner of the screen there on that map. And this is a closer view of the site, and the site actually includes the existing church property, which is the western part of the property, and then also two parcels which have been under the same ownership, and there is an existing single-family residence on that parcel that the church has acquired. And the church's plan will be to demolish the existing church building as part of the proposed redevelopment, and the existing single-family residential structure is to be split off from the rest of the site, and we'll have a driveway that comes from Thirteenth Street, which is up in the northeast corner of the site, because that parcel does have over thirty feet of frontage on northeast, on Thirteenth Street, so that would allow for driveway access at that location. And as I stated, okay, there's actually two reasons why the, this request is before you for special exception use approval, and the first one has to do with the expansion of the church building, and any existing special exception use that is proposed to be expanded by more than ten percent of the floor area requires to go through the public hearing process for special exception use approval. In this case, the existing ten thousand five hundred and twenty-one square foot building is going to be replaced by a sixteen thousand two hundred and eighty-eight square foot building, and that's an increase of over fifty percent, so therefore it is over ten percent. And then the second reason is also because the church has acquired this additional property, which is the eastern part of the site, and in order to get that use approved, for the church use approved for that property, it needs to also go through the special exception process. So those are the two reasons why this application is before you tonight. And this is a look at the site plan, and what's highlighted there is the proposed building, which will be a little bit to the east of where the existing building is located, and the plan that the church has is to continue to occupy the existing building while the proposed building is under construction, and then once the proposed building is completed and they get a CO for it, then they would then tear down the existing building and complete the parking lot improvements that are proposed in the western part of the site. And there are going to be two driveway accesses on the 12th Street, and these are highlighted by the blue arrows on the map there. And the parking area has a total of a hundred and seventy spaces, and this does exceed the requirements for places of worship, which is one space per, I believe it's three seats in the sanctuary, and so as you can see, they do satisfy the parking requirements. And then also, as far as the project stormwater management system, there's two dry retention ponds that are proposed, and these are in the east and the west parts of the site. They're both highlighted on the site plan. And this is a look at the landscape plan for the project, and around the entire perimeter of the project, a twenty-five-foot wide type-B buffer is required, and this buffer will have a minimum opaque feature of at least four feet in height, and the opaque feature will consist of a berm-hedge combination along much of the perimeter, but in areas where there's existing vegetation that would be impacted by the construction of a berm, the opaque feature will be vegetation only. And also, there is a twenty-five-foot wide type-B buffer with a four-foot opaque feature required along the site's 12th Street frontage. So the buffers around the entire perimeter of the site are to be upgraded over the existing buffers that are at the present church location, and this landscape plan does require, does comply with all the county's landscape requirements, including those for parking area landscaping and also the non-vehicular open space. Looking at some right-of-way dedication improvements that are required that relate to 12th Street, there is thirty feet of right-of-way that needs to be dedicated with compensation to the county, and this is to achieve the hundred-foot-wide ultimate right-of-way along the site's frontage of 12th Street, and as a condition of approval, the right-of-way dedication will either need to be completed or a formal agreement approved by the Board of County Commissioners prior to site plan release. And in addition, there's a sidewalk improvement acquired, required along the site's eastern frontage along 12th Street, and this will tie into the existing sidewalk that's in, that exists in front of the present church today. And then looking at the special exception use criteria for places of worship, the proposed site plan does comply with all those, and essentially, these are satisfied by having a minimum setback that's thirty feet or greater, and the site does have access from a thoroughfare plan roadway, which is another requirement. Some of the criteria relate to accessory uses, of which none of these are proposed at the church, and then the last criteria has to do with the buffer, and that's the type-B buffer that is provided along the, around all the site properties. Based on this analysis, staff recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend that the Board of County Commissioners grant special exception use approval for the church expansion with the conditions listed in the staff report.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions of staff? Greg?
Brian, could you go back to this map that you had up with the, that showed Thirteenth Street and... The site, the two empty lots just north of there, what are they zoned? Is that part of the church acquisition, or is that a standalone piece of property?
Yes, that's actually part of the property that's currently owned by the church, and that house sits on that part of the property, and essentially, they're going to reconfigure those parcels so that the, instead of having them split north-south, they're going to be split east-west, and the southern one will be unified with the remainder of the church property, and the northern part, the church can, you know, sell to a different owner, and that would just be a single-family residence.
The Thirteenth Street entrance there will have access, so, Brian?
Yes, yes. As you can see, there is a dead-end roadway segment.
Dead ends, that's what I was concerned about. So Thirteenth will have access through there. Thank you. That's all I have.
On the, it appears to me that there has been absolutely no attempt whatsoever to salvage some of the trees on the property. Do you have the map of the tree survey map?
And maybe you could explain the mitigation behind all of this.
You don't have that tree survey map on the...
We can put it on the Elmo. It's not part of the PowerPoint.
Looking at the slide that you have up now.
It'd be better to put it on the Elmo, Brian. You're going to need...
Troublemaker she is. In the beginning, there was charcoal.
Let's just go back to the...
Sure. I have enough technical difficulty there.
All right. On the...
East side.
Right-hand side of the property, on the right, where you said the twenty-five-foot buffer all around. So on the right-hand side, and I don't have a point, can you point, please, a mouse pointer?
Mm-hmm. It's about halfway down the east side of the property. There's two, two...
Yeah, right about there.
There're two laurel oaks.
There's two laurels there, and they're twenty-five-foot buffer, and you're going to drive up to grow these things. Why do those trees have to come out?
I don't know. I don't think those trees are being removed.
It seems to be there's a bump out there in that dry retention pond, just right in that area. There's a bump out there?
It's removed there.
I don't think they're being removed, are they?
Do you know which page you're looking at?
Yes, the landscape, the tree survey?
Well, according to the list where it says, "Existing Tree Removal Table Number One Sixty-four and Number One Sixty-five," which are the two laurel oaks, they're, they've got yes, they're going to be removed on the list, as do most of the live oaks and other laurel oaks on the property.
I'm looking on sheet L three-point-three, and it's showing trees One sixty-four and One sixty-five as being to remain.
Our table shows that they are, yes, they're to be removed, so they are to be remained, they are to remain?
The symbol is for them to remain. There may be a mistake on the chart.
What we have on the chart is everything, is the first, the top of the chart, it's like thirty-five through forty-seven stays, and we have one slash pine, which is number one-twenty-five, and there's, I mean, there's several.
I don't see One sixty-four, One sixty-five listed in that chart. The text is real small, but it looks like One eighty-four and One eighty-five are listed.
If it's any smaller on the print, I'll tell you that.
Okay, well, then maybe you're right.
I think they've designed the site to save the existing trees, you know, where they can, and particularly around the site's perimeter, and also some of the, you know, the better specimen trees out on the site.
We can't, we can't show you this, but there's a, right here on the east, would be the west side of the church itself, there's several oaks listed as well, and it looks like it's in the green space, and then, maybe I'm, we're misreading the chart up here, but...
Actually, I went out to the site a few months ago with environmental planner, and we looked at a lot of those trees along that boundary. They're all laurel oaks, and they're in pretty bad condition. I mean, there were some of them that had almost no canopy to them.
That's because it's springtime, sweetheart.
Yeah.
No, no, this was in November. This was in November.
Okay, well, I mean, you, there are a couple of live oaks, at least listed, you know, we're trying to, and I, I understand they need, may want to remove them, but then, at the top, it says trees to be mitigated. There are fifteen four-inch diameter live oaks to be mitigated. I was trying to hit a balance with what our code is to make sure, you said it, we understand you said a yes, but maybe you could explain a little further what they are doing if they're taking out these oaks.
What is the mitigation?
Also, I'll note, regarding the species of the oaks, almost every oak tree on the site is a laurel oak. I know the tree survey shows them as mostly labeled live oaks, but that's pretty much in error. The, as far as the tree mitigation, that's shown on sheet L one-point-one, and they're doing all their mitigation on-site, and essentially, the county requires that for whatever inch of total diameter of specimen trees, which are trees that are twelve-inch, hardwood trees of twelve inches or more of diameter, they have to mitigate at a two-to-one ratio. So, in this case, it looks like they've got fifteen four-inch caliper trees, so that adds up to a total of sixty inches. So it looks like there were thirty inches of trees that they had to mitigate for, that were hardwood trees being removed from the site. Most of the trees on the site are either slash pines or laurel oaks.
Do you have any more trees on the survey that have the octagon around them? All the trees are being kept?
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct.
That's fine. You have to do the chart on the right, number zero.
I mean, not, you know, not that it matters, but I mean, when you take the chart on the right and add it up, it's not sixty inches. It's more than sixty.
From one sixty to one eighty-three, was it? I can't see it, one eighty-three.
I think this chart is only listing trees that are being removed. There's actually another sheet that has another table on it, and I think that one included all the trees on the site. And as far as the mitigation that's being done, a tree only has to be mitigated for if it's a hardwood tree and it's a healthy tree, so some of the trees that are out there are in...
So what you did is you discounted, Roland discounted, or whoever discounted?
Right. Our environmental planning staff looked at tree by tree to see which ones would need to be mitigated.
Okay.
Okay, then I have one other question. And I know you raised a point, could be this way, I was like, why the dry retention versus wet retention, dry retention or retention?
I think that's something probably have to let the project engineer talk to as far as why one type is used over the other. It, I know there is, and for residential projects, there's pretty much a prohibition on dry retention, but it's not prohibitive, prohibited for this type of development, and in certain cases, actually, it would be profitable.
Could the engineer come up?
Could the engineer for the applicant come up, or the applicant, or just identify yourself for the record, please?
Robert Leon, MBV Engineering. The reason why we chose a, two dry pond systems because of the depth of the water table, it was so high up, for the existing conditions, that's why we had to choose the dry retention system.
Do you think it's fine if I understand what you're saying?
You have to dig a pond really deep.
Aaron Bowles, MBV Engineering. I believe the reason we went with a wet or a dry pond was, when you do a wet pond, the control elevation is based on the existing water table, your normal water table elevation, and being that it's down at a certain depth, we couldn't outfall to the adjacent swale system that we're outfalling to. It would, we have to fill the pond up substantially to have it even start outfalling, so we're not really getting any credit for the volume below that, so that just made sense to go with the dry.
So you're stacking the water high enough on-site until it flows off slowly?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions of staff? Would the applicant like to be heard about anything else?
Again, Aaron Bowles, MBV Engineering, and we're just here to answer any technical, any technical questions you may have, and the architect, Frank Schroppe, he's here tonight to answer any other questions you may have, as well as Robert Leon with MBV Engineering.
Thank you. If no other questions, we'll open the hearing to the public. Public hearing is now open. We'll start over here. Anybody care on this side of the room to speak, or questions? How about in the center section? Yes, sir.
Mr. Hamner?
Yes, sir. Come up front, and please identify yourself, give us your name and address. Good joke if you have one.
Jim Collins, thirty-nine, twelve forty, Thirty-Ninth Avenue.
Could we go back to the...
Get a map where they had the houses?
The overall aerial?
Yeah.
Brian, yeah. Brian, can, he wants to go back to the aerial map? Oh, there you go. Is that...
There's one before there.
You want the zoom in, or you want the zoom out?
They had it.
Sir? You want the, the other one, or the...
Just want to do for the start. I'm at the end of, that's a cul-de-sac there on Thirty-Ninth Avenue.
Thirty-Ninth.
And we, we actually back up to the parking lot. Now, about four years ago, they removed all the shrubs there, and they were supposed to, supposed to replace them.
Right.
Now, right now, you have openings right through the whole thing. Now, what's going to happen in the future?
The plan calls for a type-B buffer, which is twenty-five feet and fairly thick. It'd be up to you to, if they don't do it, then we'd have to have code enforcement, but the current plan means they're going to fill that in and then some.
Is it going to be elevator? Is it going to be like a barn?
Brian?
Yes, the church is going to have to significantly upgrade the landscaping that's along that part of the boundary of the site. There are some existing oak trees that they're going to preserve those trees, so there won't be a berm put in along the boundary, but they are putting in a lot of understory trees and also a wax myrtle shrubbery feature that'll serve as the opaque feature, and so that's going to be along the edge of the parking lot to screen those properties in that area, and also, if there's any problems that, that there have been with the condition of the existing landscaping, that's something that, you know, you can call our code enforcement staff, and they can go out and take a look at that.
Yeah, well, as you say, you're going to allow twenty-five feet. Right now, we have a problem with people coming through there. It's like a shortcut for people.
Was this opaque?
The...
You've got a four-foot opaque feature.
Close the back.
Right, and that's, that's along the edge of the parking lot, which is a little bit higher grade than at the property line, and also, one thing I'll note is that when you're looking at the aerial image, that existing parking lot's only ten feet off the property line, so when the church redevelops the property, they're going to tear out that existing parking lot, and when they build the new parking lot, it's going to be twenty-five feet off the property line. So there's going to be an area that's two and a half times wide as the existing condition for putting in a landscape buffer, so there's going to be a lot more trees and shrubs in that buffer, and it's going to be a buffer that's two and a half times in width as the existing buffer.
Perimeter, it talks about the perimeter buffer with a four-foot opaque feature is required and proposed along the site's entire perimeter.
Right, that's correct. The only area where that won't occur is actually along the 12th Street frontage, where it's not adjacent to the parking lot. Essentially, it's only in front of the building.
Hmm.
So that's, and that's shown on sheet L one-point-one.
Okay, so for what, for what he's asking about, though, he's looking at a twenty-five-foot buffer, which, if you have a question about, we have standards on the understory planting, you could, she can show you them. It's fairly thick, but the four-foot opaque feature would be what? It's going to be plants?
Yeah, it's going to be vegetation.
I think now we have a problem with sandalism. My house has been broken into. I mean, you know, we're nice neighbors, but we have some heavy shrubs in there.
Brian, did you all talk about a six-foot opaque, like a, I mean, a concrete wall or anything that would buffer the neighborhood?
I think the church looked at that. I think it got cost prohibitive based on the amount of perimeter that they have around their entire site, and the...
But they could, could they handle it, did you ask them about handling it along that street property, where the houses are there, maybe to block those?
If I, if I could just speak to Stan Bowles, Planning Director, I think in, in this kind of situation, yeah, a lot of times, especially when there's existing vegetation, we look to not, not have walls, and a lot of times, aesthetically and so forth, that, that doesn't work too well in a residential setting. I think if the, the concern here is to try to cut off pedestrian traffic in a particular area, you know, one possibility is even just four-foot-high chain-link fences, black vinyl clad, blends in with landscaping. We've seen it work in some areas where, you know, there's been, been cut through.
Inside the plantings?
Inside, in the middle of the strip, so it blends right in. You know, if, some plantings, if they're, if they're thick enough, will be difficult to penetrate, but if you have fencing like that in there, sometimes that can, that can alleviate that kind of problem.
That can, could that, that can be added to the current buffering plan, correct, without affecting the, the amount of plants?
Yes, I mean, that could be added into the, that buffer. It could accommodate that.
Originally, there was supposed to be a wall there. I think when you, when you were talking about the first time around, there was supposed to be a six-foot wall put there.
Would the applicant be, would the applicant be willing to put in the four-foot black vinyl-covered chain-link fence that goes, that goes through the plantings?
My name is Franz Joseph Schroppe. I'm the project architect for the church. We would rather do it with landscaping. There is a twenty-five-foot landscape buffer strip there. There's also a drainage ditch on the other side of the property that is fairly deep. Are...
Is there a drainage ditch?
At the end of the cul-de-sac?
I believe there is.
The property line, maybe, but not at the end of the cul-de-sac?
It, on part of it.
I believe there's a west...
On the west, and it looks like on the east and the west side.
I can pick it up. Is there a ditch on the north property?
There's a ditch that's about two and a half foot.
It's one of the drainage swale ditches?
Yeah, it's one of the swale.
There's a ditch on the west, and the largest one, but there's water in it. I've been there recently, and there's water in it, in the drought. We would, we would prefer to put something akin to Spanish bayonet, Loganvillea, something that has thorns that would...
Turret.
Yes, that would be rather painful for somebody to go across. The reason that I can give you that the landscaping was not maintained was the church has area maintenance people who's no longer with the church, and he didn't do his job, that's why it slowly died out. But in the future, I can guarantee you, it will be maintained, and I can give the gentleman my card. He can call me directly. I'm in Fort Lauderdale. We'll make sure that it's maintained.
The church is a great neighbor. It's just that, you know, we don't like people trespassing on our property.
I think they're...
I understand.
That drain is, there's only water in there when we have a huge downpour.
Right.
Well, the new site's going to have over two and a half times the distance and probably at least that much thicker buffer in there, so it's going to help you a lot.
There is trees there.
There will be at the new, at the new site, there will be.
One of the reasons that we don't like to put up an opaque feature such as a concrete fence or a cement block fence with stucco on it, is a lot of times, then the neighbor will put a fence on his property if he has a dog or children, and now we have a, for lack of a better word, an alley in there, and it, this is a much better system.
We, I think we understand that.
Okay, thank you.
What's the possibility of making that swale a little deeper?
It's a county.
It's a county.
Yeah, that's an engineering question.
Do you have any other points you'd like to make, sir?
I have them said, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the public care to have anything to say before we close the hearing? Okay, we got one first, ladies first, and... Ladies first and...
Is my...
No, you make...right here is our left ear, it's almost as good as our right.
I've prepared a letter to all of you from...
Name and address, please.
Name and address, please.
My name is Ria Jepson. 1215 37th Avenue is the home that I own.
And would you like a copy of it, or shall I give it to the clerk?
Both.
All the above.
I have several concerns with this proposed site. Right now, if I can point how it looks...the reason that we bought our home was that we liked the park-like setting behind our home. We're the second house from the end on the right side here. And right now, from our backyard, we have a view of trees. It's like nature. We watch the birds. It's just very private, and we love it. Have owned it for eight, nine years now, and was a little concerned when we got this letter saying that they were going to build church. So I came in and talked to Mr. Freeman to see what was going on, and found that the church is going to be built up on a three-foot additional embankment, I guess, for Phil. And it's going to be 27-foot high. That takes it 30-foot...excuse me, 30-foot higher than my view now. So I lose my view, and I think my property value is going to go down. I'm not going to be able to go out in the evening and enjoy the sunset. It's going to be gone. I'm going to have some of the problems this last gentleman was talking about, I'm sure, with people walking through the yard to get to church. But the thing is, is the reason that I own the home is going to be gone, and my property value is going to go down. I'm going to have a hard time reselling it if I should ever choose to do that in the future. I think that some of my other concerns would be the lights, from the lights in the parking lot, the noise from the air conditioning units, which is a real concern for me because I need it to be quiet, and they are large commercial air conditioners. And so it's going to change the whole reason that we have moved to Vero Beach in the first place. So I would...personally, I'd like to see that the church not be allowed to do this, and that if they want a new church, either one of two solutions be found, and that's find a more suitable place that is not in a residential neighborhood, because I don't want a 30-foot-high structure, and that doesn't even include the steeple. If they could find another place that's more of a commercial location, more suitable for that height and that size of a structure, I mean, I would like that. Or if they were to just rebuild in their present site and not be allowed to change the usage of what is there now.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Any questions of the speaker?
Let me ask the architect. Where are your air conditioning units located?
Our air conditioning units are about 230 feet west of her house. Our air conditioning units, the largest one is seven tons. She won't hear them. She'll hear the neighbor's air conditioner or her own before she hears ours. Plus, we have a 110-foot landscape buffer between our parking lot and her property line, which will help dissipate any sound that's there.
Our concern was we had a serious situation that occurred on the beach with St. Edward's School that had air conditioners that were 200 or 300 feet from the homes. And it's the type of air conditioner that you installed as much as the air conditioning unit. So are you going to...is this going to be a cold water?
No, sir. Air-to-air.
Air-to-air.
Are these the ground-mounted or are they on this?
They're on a concrete slab.
They're on the ground.
On grade.
But they're not contained within any structure that I see, except the little PVC fence. So my concern is that I am going to hear them. It's well and fine to say, well, you won't hear them. But then, once I'm sitting there and I start to hear them, I don't really have any recourse. Right now is my recourse to say, I would like to see something different than the approval.
Brian, could you...can you show this up on the screen?
I don't know. Brian can...
I would like to address a couple of issues, if I may, at this point. The church in the past has been a good neighbor. We want to be a good neighbor, and we will continue to be a good neighbor. When we did our first addition to the building, the church was going to sell the property where the single-family residence is to a developer who was going to build eight lots and put them adjacent to the east property line. The backyard setback is 25 feet from the property line, and then you can start the house. We didn't want to...when we got into it, we said, this isn't such a good idea. We're going to not be a good neighbor by doing this, because we're going to put houses right next to existing houses. So we did not do that. And then we, instead of putting all of our parking lot in one area where it is more advantageous for us and cost-effective, we split it up, and we put a retention area on that side, which is 110-foot buffer between the east property line and our first parking space. The distance now between the east property line and the wooden fence is 200 feet approximately. So we've given the people an excellent view. There's going to be birds there, there's going to be wildlife, there's going to be a nice ambiance feeling there. We've done this successfully on other projects, and the wildlife flourished. We have squirrels, we have red hawks, we have raccoons, everything imaginable in this area. This is not going to be a dead zone. It's going to be very attractive, what we've planned to do. And we've gone to a lot of trouble to meet with Brian and the naturalists and everybody involved to make this as nice as we can and still build a facility for us.
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
Why is it that they couldn't build their new church in the existing church location where the building now sits? If they want a new building or a larger building, then why couldn't you use that location?
We can do that, and that can be done. But then they'll sell it to a developer who's going to come in and on your backyard, build single-family homes, some of them which will probably be two-story, and 25 feet from your property line, you're going to be looking at a high wall. We are trying to be a good neighbor.
It's RS-6, it could be...
Actually, it could be apartments.
Well, and I could be incorrect here, but when we bought the home, we were told that this parcel had already been split once. It existed as a 10-acre parcel, and it was split to make tall pine subdivision. And the lower half of the five acres could never be split, was what we were told. And so that was one of the reasons that we decided to go ahead and buy the home. So I'm really surprised that we're looking at doing something that I understood couldn't or shouldn't happen with this particular item, such as selling the house, splitting it and selling the house, and then building on it. Where do any of...where do we stand with that?
I think that unfortunately, some of the information that she was given a few years ago by whoever gave it to her was just incorrect. It is true that there was a one-time split done so that tall pine subdivision could be developed, which was split off of the same property. But that doesn't preclude the remainder of the property from being developed via subdivision plat, which is a possibility.
So, well, I think that a single-family home at 10 or 12 feet high is preferable, personally, to a 30-foot structure that I can't see through. So...and it's, you know, clearly going to be right behind me and my house. Where is your house? Is it on the east or west of the church? If you can put the site map back up again, I can show you. Can you show...there we go. If you come over here on the right-hand side of this screen, I'm the second from the end on 12th Street. So, right there, that's me. So you see my view right now is like a nature preserve, nice, peaceful, quiet. When the new church is built, definitely that does happen. What I'm going to be looking at is a retention pond, followed by 30-foot-high structure, and AC units. Hopefully, won't be noisy, but there's no guarantee of that.
There's an option...there is an option that you could be looking at a housing development there, and it's RS-6. It could be a very dense...I mean, you could be looking at an apartment building there. You're going to, as it is now, you're going to have a very good...
Building?
It's RM6, could be residential, multifamily.
RS.
RS.
It can't be multifamily.
So it would be...
You could look at a house...
Would be in my neighborhood across the street, just single-story homes.
Could be two-story. You could have a two-story house 25 feet away from you. That's the other option.
There's nothing that says they have to be single-story. It depends. If you look at the cookie cutter, the homes out west of town, there's some of both.
Or it could remain like it is now.
Well, that's not going to happen.
I don't think that...
Unfortunately, it's their right to develop their property.
Well, okay, so with that in mind, I wanted to address...
Thank you.
I wanted to list my concerns, so that at least if I have to have the church in my backyard, then maybe it'll be quiet. I don't have to listen to the AC units or have the light shine on me at night.
Ma'am, if I may, the code requires that our lights, we have a lumen level, that means the brightness of the light, of zero at the property line.
Right.
So the lights will not bother you. Perhaps you have a misconception of our retention area. It is going to be heavily landscaped, and it'll actually be better than what's there now. Most of the trees that are there are pine trees. The next hurricane is probably going to wipe out what it didn't in the last hurricane. We're going to put trees in there, oaks, bald cypress, and it'll be layered. There'll be very tall mid-canopy and low-canopy trees. It'll be much more attractive than it is now. You must have faith in your staff here. They have worked with us diligently and not cost the church quite a bit of money in additional landscaping and birmingham that is there. As far as the air conditioning units, I don't believe you can hear the air conditioning units that are there now. And these are really beasts. They're old, noisy, just beasts. And the ones that they have now are energy efficient, they're much quieter, they're much nicer. I will give you my business card, and if you have any problems with the noise or the landscaping that is in your area, call us and we'll address it. Again, the church wants to be a good neighbor, and we don't want to have angry neighbors adjoining us or in the neighborhood. So we will do whatever we can, other than building it on another site, to appease you. To find another site with the price of land today makes it prohibitive. We're talking about by the time we buy another piece of property and go there, a $20 million project, and it's tough to do.
And that's the thing, if they did go somewhere else, you would be subject to development there for housing.
I...that doesn't bother me. I mean...
So you'd rather have something 25 feet away and two-story?
Well, it's not...
Than 100 feet away than...
It would more than likely be one story, would be, you know, but none of us know, is the point.
Right, right.
I do know that this is 30-foot. I know that I can't see my sunset anymore, because it's going to be right there behind me because of where my house is and where the location of the church is. So that's my primary concern, plus the loss...what I feel is going to be the loss of my property value, because of the reasons that I bought the house no longer exist.
Okay, I think we understand and hear your concerns.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir, you...we're next?
My name is Joe Carroll. I live at 1160 38th Avenue, which is just south of the 12th Street there. I wanted to bring up a point you probably can't do anything about, but just for your information.
Yes, Joe.
The present condition of the eastern part of the site is kind of like pasture with pine trees in it. And the last few years, red-tailed hawk pair has nested in those pine trees. And it's quite pleasing to hear them make their sounds and fly over that area. In fact, their nests were probably in the vicinity of the E on that site plan there. Maybe you can't save any pine trees, and maybe they can't build anymore. Maybe a red-tailed hawk is quite adaptable and can move from one place to the other. But it is kind of something poignant in my life to contemplate that it'll be all building and parking lot, and there'll be no effort to provide that same kind of habitat in the area. They would start nesting at the end of this month through April, May, something like that. So at a minimum, I would ask that if they are nesting in this site, there'd be no cutting of those trees and ascending until they're finished.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
My name is Milton Guy, and I live on 1225 37th Avenue. Basically, I've got a letter here. I know that some of these concerns have been brought up already, but I'd like to read it in and give you guys copies of it. "To the LDS members and the county officials, it's happening in our backyard, and we understand that federal law affords church organizations certain land use liberties that are not granted to businesses. Our concern is that even though the church is seeking a special exemption, the impact on the community is the same as a business enterprise due to its size and level of activity. The increased size of the buildings raises many questions and concerns. One is, can 12th Street, as it exists, accommodate the level of service? Has this study been done? Number two, how will the exterior light pollution be mitigated? Number three, basically, a plastic fence around multiple commercial AC units is not sufficient to place noise levels at tolerable residential levels. What will be done about this? And four, the 12th Street canal already does not sufficiently drain the area it serves. A major area of concern is the corner of 12th Street and 37th Avenue. Even with these two retention ponds, by covering so much landscape with impermeable surfaces, what will be the effect on the surrounding residences? We realize change is inevitable. How can we work together to lessen the impact on our residential community? As homeowners, we enjoy the quiet natural surroundings, backyards filled with frequent visits by the hawks that was just talked about, owls and many other animals, and peaceful sunsets. And all we ask is that the church members and the county officials consider the community that they are serving."
Thank you, sir. Anyone else care to speak from the public? Yes, ma'am. Make sure...let me see. Okay, thank you. Sorry, I'm passing it down. Thank you. Yes?
My name is Claire Chase, and I live at 1235 37th Avenue. And I just would like clarification on the two vacant lots in back of the proposal site.
Brian, are you talking about the property to the north?
It would be on the east side and going off, yes.
She's referring to the area that's above the dashed red line. There's an existing house and a tennis court you can see in the aerial. And essentially, what...that's going to become a single parcel with one residence which already exists on it. If somebody wanted to tear down the existing house and build a new house, they could. But it's a single-family residential parcel, so that means one residence.
But the vacant property to the east of that house that was shown as parcels cannot be developed individually into homes now.
No, it's going to be combined. Essentially, they're going to take that existing line that runs north-south through those two lots.
Make one parcel out of it, which would mean there could be one house on it, but not multi-homes, even though it's RS-6 or whatever, that once they make this division, that property's...it's not fixed where the house can be, but it's fixed with one house.
And those will no longer be two separate parcels. That'll be a single parcel with that existing house on it. So there won't be two lots, there's just one lot.
But someone could have maintained one...they could tear that house down, put one house in the middle of the parcel. I mean, they could do...they can build on the east side if they wanted to, but it's only one...it would only be the one home.
Thank you.
It could never subdivide it again.
Only by doing a subdivision plat, which would have to meet all the subdivision requirements that apply to that, such as drainage, access, landscape buffers, and minimum dimensional requirements for any lots. I don't know that it'd be feasible to develop that.
But not impossible.
Not impossible.
But not impossible. Did you hear that? Okay. Okay, anybody else? Okay, anybody else in the public? Yes, ma'am? Were you sworn in, ma'am? Did you stand, were you sworn in?
I just put my hand up, sitting, does that count?
Oh, absolutely.
As long as you're sworn, that's fine. I didn't see you stand, that's why.
Okay, my name is Joanne McCoy, and I live at 1215 40th Avenue, that's on the west side, and I was just curious, when, we, on a cul-de-sac, which is up at 14th Street and 12th, uh, 40th Avenue, as you go up 12th Street north, there's, would have been 13th Street that went through, but it doesn't go through, either east or west, but it would come, yeah, that's it, I guess. Okay, there's no chance that.
Wonder if we can have 13th Street come through and make a road all the way through?
Into the property.
Looks like the right-of-way has already been yielded on, there's two houses over there already.
So, yeah, I think there's houses, so there's no possibility that they would use 40th and come in on 13th? Couldn't be done, okay.
I don't think so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Public hearing is now closed. Comments? We need a motion. Yes, sir.
Would the church be willing to look at buffering the air-to-air units? There's some very efficient and inexpensive material that can be used to buffer those units now, close down all into the air. I think you've got to add to buffer now with the landscaping that's coming out on that side, that it's certain stuff that needs to be done that would help.
Better than PVC fencing.
What, what we can do is, in lieu of putting the PVC fence in front of it, we can put, take that out and put some landscaping in there to help absorb the sound.
You'd make some.
There is a specific buffering material that's used for air-to-air units that is relatively inexpensive and efficient, that throws everything up in the air, and I want to investigate that, it's something.
We'll, we'll do that effort, and, and if we can find it, and if it works, if we feel it works, we'll incorporate that into the plan.
Is there anything you can do about the red-tailed hawk?
I, I was just speaking to him. On the west side where that is, our new retention area will equal almost what is there now, and it'll be enhanced with native hardwoods. Also, the way we had the project phased, it'll take us about a year to build our church, and then the nesting season will be over when we're ready to go where, where they are, so they'll be fine.
For the one year?
No, it, we've done this before, St. Edward's, St. Monica's, a dozen places, and it, it works very well. Wildlife flourishes, in fact, I've got one that's giving me grief because water moccasins are growing in it. But this'll be fine, because it's a drive of attention.
Any other questions?
Yeah, is it, would it be at all possible, I wasn't talking, I didn't think that the, they were talking about a wall sealing off this fellow's house where the, where the, where the people were going in and out through to the church. How about just a, just a, just a fence?
It's four-foot chain-link fence.
Just a chain-link fence, not a, not, not, no wall, I mean, a transparent chain-link fence. We're not even talking about a long section of four-foot chain-link fence. It seems to me that that's relatively inexpensive to do, and would frustrate those who would, would like to go through that particular area.
I don't know of any church members that go through there, actually. The, the issue is, if I may, where, where do you, where do you end the fence? If I ended at 50 feet, that means the guy has to walk 60 feet before he turns the corner.
That's right, and it's, it's, it's that much more inconvenient, and so he's less likely to use it, and, and it's not a, it's not a question of having a long fence, just, just across, across this fellow's property. Seems to me that that's, you know, and I, I don't, I don't think, we're not talking about fencing the whole property.
Are you talk, excuse me, are you talking about going across the, the whole, the parcel from corner to corner that would be?
Just where the existing parking lot is right now, where that fellow's house is on, 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 that, where he said that he was having people, people going through.
It looks like if you're going to do it, you'd do the whole, the corner to the.
You really, you own that house, the one, the single house there.
House, yeah.
So, so you're not talking about a, a long distance, you're talking.
Eighty-foot lot, 100-foot lot? We're talking about 300 feet.
It's 330 feet, actually.
Across the back there? All the way across, or?
Across, across.
The part we're talking about?
Yes, not just his lot now, but, but that entire area.
Across the whole, the whole, the whole piece.
You'd cover three lots.
To give you a benchmark of numbers, for us to have built a CBS wall, six-foot high, around the three sides of our property, the bid came up, came in at $345,000.
We don't like walls.
No, I understand that.
We don't like solid walls.
You don't think we want a wall.
Now, a fence would not be near that.
No.
And, and how high are you saying to do it?
Four feet.
Okay.
Four-foot fence going, I'm not even sure you need the full 330 feet, if that's what that is.
Yeah, I would.
I think you could put some plants in there that would discourage people, some salpelmido, I mean, that's one of my favorite plants, and, and people don't like to walk through that stuff, and you could put a little sign, beware of the moccasin, or the, and, and that'll probably take care of some of the, with plants, you can make it so that people don't want to go through there. There's, there's all kinds of barbed plants that people just don't like to mess around with.
And you're going to have a 25-foot, or, you know.
I'd rather not have the fence there, because that, that is a, I mean, we have enough fences, and then you have wildlife having a problem getting through that, too, and.
Anyone else?
Well, the consensus is that we need to get you to plant something in there that's deter people going across there. Would you promise to do that for us?
Constantine wire.
Well.
That'll do it.
I mean, wax myrtle, I don't think will do it.
Wax myrtle won't stop it.
We'll, we'll, we'll work with Brian and, and put something in there that'll negate.
Some sort of deterrent that would keep people from walking through that 330 feet. Can we get that, that from you, as a promise? Great.
We'll do it, we'll use salpelmido or something.
With that as an exception, or as a standard, I'll move to adopt this, second, with the recommendation that some deterrent plants be at 100, or the 330 feet. I'll second the motion.
Any other comments or questions? The other, only other item was, which was not required by us, it's out of our purview, was, was to try and buffering the material around that air conditioner. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose like sign, pass the unanimous. Okay, next item.
So we got a promise for you with the air conditioner buffering and the plants, right?
Got a, anybody got anything for, on the commissioners matters? Commissioners matters? Okay, planning matters, Stannell.
I think, just if, I don't know if you all had any questions on the, the windmill regulations, we, we provided the report with respect to kind of conventional windmills, single windmills, 20 to 30-foot height range, where those are accessory, and then either windmill farms or much taller windmill structures would be considered a heavy utility use, and would have, is allowed only as a special exception use, so there'd be quite a bit of discretion in those instances. So in staff's opinion, the, either a windmill farm or a very large kind of wind turbine would, would have a good deal of regulation and discretion because of the special exception process. So in our opinion, it, we think that the existing regulations cover, I think some of the, some more extreme examples that have been proposed is, are being proposed in some other locations right now.
It seems to be they could be allowed in quite a few, a few zoning areas.
By special exception.
Yeah.
That's correct.
It leaves it up to debate, though, doesn't it? And discussion. I just wanted to see something more proactive, instead of being reactive later on and having trouble. We had something concrete to begin with, to deter in, in certain areas, obviously only. But if you feel comfortable with it, that.
What would, what's after special exception use, I mean, that would.
Outright prohibition.
Yeah, I mean, that's about as far as you can go.
And the feds. Might, might get a little preemption attention.
How did you, did you see, and I've seen in the paper where they're talking Doug Coward in St. Lucie County figures that on state land, or on the land that they bought for.
Yeah.
Public use, it's, it's his belief it's illegal.
The only places that we've, we've even heard about anywhere in, maybe even the east coast of Florida that I've heard about is right on a barrier island, right, right on the coastline, for any real wind generating. We've had some west of town for the more traditional.
Pumping.
Kind of sizes, yeah, irrigation pump, that sort of thing. And I, I think Bob had mentioned this last time, if, if the barrier island is the only location really in this area that, that can sustain it, just the prices of that land, you know, having something like that pop up on private land is pretty, pretty rare. That's our, our view of it, anyway.
Well, for once, I think you're right.
We better mark it down.
Any other?
Write that down in your book.
Any other matters coming forward?
The only thing that, that I did want to bring up is we, as we kind of set the schedule for the next workshop, the one coming up the first half of March, we, we need to contact presenters and so forth to, to start to line this up, so we don't have a hard and fast date, probably the second week in March is, is where we would be looking for, but one of the things that would make a difference is if you all believe that we could do one of the workshops at least, and, and maybe this next one as a day meeting, that'll, that opens up a little bit more time, and, and if that's the case, if particular day of the week, or, or morning or afternoon is something that we could, that we could work with, we're probably looking at probably a good three-hour slot.
Having, having attended the other one meeting the other night, I would just as soon start and do it in the afternoon unless people have an objection to it, I would prefer, like 1:30 to 5:00 or something, I mean, I, and rather than trying to start at 6:00 and carry on till 10:00 or 11:00 o'clock at night, I don't know, I mean, I know there's some concern about who can be here and who can't, they have an input, but we've been successful with afternoon meetings before.
Right.
Does anyone have any objections to anything like that?
Yeah.
Also, I would, one, one thing I would ask is that if we're with the presenters, because we need the information, and I don't want to stymie anybody, but I really believe, because I think this, we're going to see a lot of public comment, concerns, maybe real or not real, but I think that we need to limit the presenters as best we can to fairly concise, like 15 minutes or something, so that we can get into the public discussion.
Right.
Deal with whatever issues they have as quickly as we can.
We, we will guide them and have it more focused, we'll be doing a background paper and so forth, as far as that goes, and, and we have a lot of confidence in the chairman of the PMZ to keep people on, on point.
And, and try and have, and the only other request would be to try and have, as best we can, some balance, whether it's pro-con, in the middle, I mean, we need to have some blend if we can.
We'll do that, thanks, so we'll look at that, at that slot. The only other thing I wanted to just mention is that the Board of County Commissioners approved the Indian River State's addition, special exception that you all had recommended approval of, and they also approved the inter-local agreement.
Was there any doubt?
With the school.
Was there going to be any doubt?
Just want to let you know, that's all I have.
I think, what about the 13th, which is the evening that we're supposed to be meeting? Do we have it that day?
Well, yeah, we, we, we felt like that we would need a separate time slot for, you know, environmental workshop. If we were to have a very light agenda developed for the 13th, that would be a possibility, but one of the things that we see on the horizon.
No, I meant in the afternoon.
Oh, in the afternoon?
On the same day.
I'm fine with that, another week to do it, the afternoon of a PMZ meeting on March 13th.
Do we have, the, what, is, is it Liberty?
Right, I think in, in March, we, we have some, we're going to have some pretty full meetings possibly in March, one of the two, we, Liberty Park will probably be coming, three new schools, two Imagine schools that are the size of, of conventional elementary schools, and one smaller school, so those, those could go on a while, so we think those will, all four of those will probably be coming in March, and your, one of your regular meetings, or, or both regular meetings in March.
I mean, the only thing I think you want to avoid is if we're going to have a long afternoon, I don't know that we need to have a long night, but if we can do them all in one day, it's fine with me.
It's going to be the same amount of pain as the question of how focused you want the experience to be.
Well, I, I think your speakers will determine some of that.
Probably true.
I was just on the Liberty Park issue, is this the Liberty Park that has been in Washington the last couple of years?
Yes.
It's coming in.
That already has an elementary school, yes.
It has a DRI, does it have?
No, it's coming in as a TND, like Point West, it's, it's similar, really, in kind of the, the size and scope, and it'll be under the DRI threshold, but pretty close to it, fairly close to it, like Point West was.
I understand there's going to be some transfer development rights.
Yes.
Well, we have, I would really like to see a list of where those development rights are being transferred from.
Oh, that, no question, in fact, let me, let me just, real, well, well, yes, I mean, in the packet, all the sending sites will be rezoned, and, and part of the project. In other words, the project includes the, the remote sites and the site that's getting transferred, you have, you have control over the sending and receiving sites, all in the same project, that's, that's the way.
They're not from off-site coming in, okay.
They're not from some bank or something, no.
Like Cloud Grove or something, okay.
No, they're, they're coming in, so you've got control on both ends of this, the way that it's being structured.
They're sending by道路.
Yes, yes, and there'll be a rezone.
The sendings away from Liberty Park, or sending into?
Correct, that's correct. Converting to park or conservation areas, that sort of thing. So you'll, you'll see it all, in fact, the.
This will not be a, a quick presentation.
No, no, but I, I, that's why I wanted to study it pretty thoroughly, break it down.
Right, right, it'll be interesting, take, take a while, probably more than a five-minute hour.
Have the environmental work, workshop that afternoon, I'd just as soon probably not do Liberty that night, but we'll see.
We'll, we'll take a look at it.
Attorneys Matters, Mr. Glenn, nothing tonight, out of the way, all right. Leading attorney.